Mr. Board Secretary at this meeting been publicized according to the Open Public Meeting Act.
Yes, it has, Mr. McEnno.
Everybody please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're welcome.
Mr. Ballton here. Mrs. Backer.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mrs. Verno-Ricciulli.
Here.
Mr. Sayet.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Limbo.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
And Mr. McEnno.
President.
Mr. McEnno, would you like to start this meeting?
We have a presentation, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Coach, you bring your team up. Ladies and gentlemen, of all the things board members do, this is certainly my favorite thing, is to recognize student achievement. And as a board member, I'm certainly proud of what happened on the football field this year, but as a Sable resident, I was even more proud. Especially to see this town at football games, and I've been to all the away games, and how Sable has a bigger crowd than most of the home teams. And during the game on December 4th, during the second quarter, I actually walked around on the Burke Memorial side, even though I was still wearing my Sable garb, and just to look at what they were looking at. And it was pretty intimidating. And I just want to tell you guys, this is something that you are going to remember the rest of your lives. When you go to your 10th and 15th and 25-year high school reunion, I know you think that's a long way off, but you're going to remember this day and how proud this town was. And really, as a Sable resident, to see those escorts with the fire trucks and the police cars bringing you back to the field certainly made me very proud. I started watching Sable football back in 1999 when I met Brandon Hoyt and Ben Isabella at my daughter's Sweet 16 party. I started watching Sable football games, and I said, you know, this is a great program and it's well-coached, and, boy, this is just great to be state champions. And for those that can't make the connection between education and athletics, well, here's the connection. And everything that you displayed on the field, the commitment, the dedication, that's what this is all about. That's the connection between athletics and education. And I will argue with anybody that exposing young men like this to the caliber of people like George Najar and Sean Curry and the rest of the coaching staff is an education, because I know from what I've seen on and off the field that you certainly learned a heck of a lot more than just football. So I want to congratulate your coach, and I want to congratulate you guys for a great season, for making this district and this town very proud. Our athletic director, J.K., is he here?
Right behind you.
J.K., if you want to come up and... You always have great things to say about our athletic programs.
Before Mr. Cortones speaks, will I speak a little bit?
I forgot. And now our superintendent of schools, Dr. Franco.
I just would like to take a moment. I coached 10 years of baseball and football, and I've been involved 33 years, and I was always the bridesmaid. Okay? So you need to understand, this is a huge, huge victory for you guys, and you deserve it. I remember, what did I say? You guys remember what I said in September? When I got up, I said, "Make sure you bring back a championship." Did I not, Mr. Curry?
He said.
It was Jersey night, and I think I remember saying that. So you made us real proud. I can't say it any better than Mr. McEnno. Longtime fan, and I'm very proud of you guys, and it's an awesome accomplishment. And now, what Mr. Cortones is going to do is he's also going to talk a little bit about individual feats, as well as some of the other, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Najar to come up and do a little individualizing, because he deserves it. Believe me, it's a long, hard road. I know what it's like coaching. Guys, it's kind of easy playing. It's really hard coaching, because you put in tons and tons of time. And I know how much time is put in. So I appreciate everything that you guys do. I know you probably get paid about 15 cents an hour when you put in all the time, and I know you guys really put a lot of time. So congratulations. Eat it up.
Guys, I'm going to work my way backwards, and then I'm going to come back to you. The culmination of the fall season, I'm getting goosebumps. I'm getting goosebumps. And if you come to my office, I'll tell you, there's only two other places, and none of them's Yankee State and even Duroy My Heart. But some of you, if you've heard me, I go students first and athletes second, so I'm here because some of you are involved. All right? And congratulations to the 29 student athletes for the fall season who earned GMC All Academics. A bunch of few members of the football team are on there. That's what you've got to be proud of. Student first, athlete second. What they teach you, all right, on the football field is one thing, but what they teach off the field is even more important. Once again, student first, athlete second.
You have the mic, you can't, you don't speak well.
Sorry, student first, athlete second. Now, guys, I told you, you know, the other sports, the other sports teams finished before you. J.K., can't hear J.K.? That's a new one. But anyway, I'm going to go. Girls Cross Country, real, to the Outlets. One of your fellow student athletes, Rachel Castellito, Home News All Area. All right? Field hockey, we had Katie Davidas, who was voted by the field hockey coaches, first team. All right? Guys, I have to skip the next page and a half, because I'm losing about... Yeah, I'm going to skip the next page and a half. I'm going to let Coach deal with that. But our boys soccer team, second to last team to finish. All right? All a White Division champs, set a school record in wins, 15 wins, four losses, one tie. Once again, your fellow student athletes, garnered GMC All White Division, All Area and Home News, Chris Drabek, Ameka, and Alisa Easy, Jude Sifaro, and Kyle Santos. Once again, garnered not as many accolades individual, all right, but close. And once again, our girls soccer, all division, GMC All White Division, and Coaches Association. We have three student athletes, Natasha Amaro, Bridget Chivenco, and Farina Karomik. All right? I'm going to look the last one right before I get to the championship, all right? Because once again, we started students first, athlete second. You guys are students in the game and in the classroom. Remember that. All right? The other most important thing is our girls tennis team, that doesn't go, won the honor. They were the GMC Sportsmanship Award winner for the Red Division. They moved from the Red to the White. All right? Football moves from White to Red every year. All right? So your accomplishments on the field, amazing this year. Once again, amazing. What I'm going to do is I'm going to, I'd like to, once again, congratulate you. I know I high-fived a couple of you on the field. All right? What Mr. McEnno said is correct. You'll remember this for the rest of your life. Relish it. Where's the guy I talked to earlier? Relish the experience. All right? Coach Najar, it's all yours. Microphone's all yours. Thank you very much for your time.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for having us here today. We're very humbled by this, and it was a privilege to be in front of you today and to represent this great town. Board of Education, and of course, our superintendent of schools and assistant superintendent of all the administration. We feel very proud of the fact that we are representing Sable. And I think Mr. McEnno said it best, and one of the greatest feelings that we had as a team and as an organization was when we came over to the South River Bridge, and we had the fire trucks and the police escorting us through town. It was a great feeling to see the people out in the streets, hunkering their horns and waving, and it was wonderful. We're also honored to be part of the celebration the following day for the holiday parade, and they put us on flatbed trucks, and they drove us through town, and people in the streets, and we were very warm and excited about that, and we felt honored to be part of that. So I want to thank you for that opportunity, and I want to thank the entire Board of Education and the administration for the support that we've had throughout the entire year, not just because of this championship, but, you know, the great town, the great thing about this town, as Mr. McEnno pointed out, is even at the away games, we get great support, and people come to all games, whether it's home or away, win or lose. And we've had a lot of tough losses in our years, and we've come closer quite often, and it's never really ever better the support of this town. And for us to bring a championship home is great, not just for the football players, but for the entire community of Sable. And we feel honored and privileged to be a part of that, so we want to thank you on behalf of us as a football program. Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to introduce the coaching staff, who, of course, we can't do without. Coach Curry, our defense coordinator, did an outstanding job this year, and I can't say enough about the amount of work that he puts into his job and the great way he goes about it, his professional manner. Coach Mish, who's assigned teacher here in the building, his first year coaching, did a great job for us, too, as an offensive line coach. Coach Bell, a former player, who was actually here on our last championship team in 1997, is our freshman and JV coach. Coach Salem, a history teacher also now, been here for three or four years. Bobby Brani, a former player, joined us here for the first year. Coach Mahoney is our English teacher here in the program, is the head freshman coach. And Coach Novak is our head baseball coach, has also been assistant football coach for 12 years. So many of these guys have waited a long time for a championship, and I can't thank these guys on my right enough for helping bring it back to the town of Sable. I'm going to introduce to you quickly, or I'm going to ask one of our sophomores to step out over here, please, if you don't mind. A sophomore, young underclassman, who we hope to form the foundation for the future, Mike Carey, Z. Perkinsen, Thomas Speaker, Brian McMahon, Robert Geiger, Joe Velez, and T.Jill Ashel... Oh, you're a junior, I'm sorry. You guys, juniors, step out. Ashel Brothers. T.Jill is the one that suffered the broken arm during the course of the game on Edwards, his brother Tio. Junior is Steven Nazar, Craig Spitzer. And my senior group, step out, please. We have Justin McDonald. We have Devon Jackson, Mike Belowitz, and Alex Martin. So I just want to say a couple of quick words about Dorian Clark. Dorian Clark is a four-year player in this program, but broke his foot the second game of the year, and had to watch him on the sidelines the entire year. We're hoping he can make it back for the playoffs, but he never did, and hopefully his foot will be better, but he's been a fabric in this program, and he came to practice regularly, and our hearts and souls are with him for his future. He was a great football player and a great kid, and his attitude was great throughout the entire time. So I want to give him special recognition for his attitude. Once again, on behalf of the entire football program, I would like to thank you for having us here today. It's a pleasure and a privilege to serve this community. Thank you.
I'd like to give the attention, finish up with the accolades, the individual awards for some of your players. So I'll let Mr. ... No, you don't do that. You do this.
Oh, the Outlets? Ah.
That's our resolution.
Okay, guys, you ready? All right. NJSIAA, Central Jersey Group Four Champions. Michael Belowitz, GMC All Red Division, Home News Tribune, All Area Thirteen, Star Ledger, All County Thirteen. Joe Geiger, GMC All Red Division, Home News All Area Honorable Mention, Star Ledger, All County Thirteen. Ishmael Herring, Home News Tribune, All Area Honorable Mention. Sidney Ho, GMC All Red Division, GMC All Conference, Home News Tribune, Defensive Player of the Year. Home News Tribune, All Area First Team. Star Ledger, All County First Team. Star Ledger, State First Team. Star Ledger, Defensive Player of the Year. Devon Jackson, Home News Tribune, All Area Honorable Mention. George Kablenz, GMC All Red, Home News Tribune, All Area First Team. Star Ledger, All County First Team. Alexander Martins, Home News Tribune, All Area Honorable Mention. Devon Stevenson, GMC All Red Division, GMC All Conference, Home News Tribune, Offensive Player of the Year. Home News Tribune, All Area First Team. Star Ledger, All County First Team. Star Ledger, State Second Team. All Metro, Group Four First Team. Star Ledger, County Offensive Player of the Year. Devon Stevenson, GMC All Red Division, GMC All Conference. Home News Tribune, All Area First Team. Star Ledger, All County First Team. Star Ledger, All State, Thirteen. All Metro, Group Four First Team. Patrick Strauss, GMC All Red Division. Home News Tribune, All Area Second Team. Star Ledger, All County Second Team. Alexander Martins, Home News Tribune, All Area Honorable Mention. And Alexander Maselli, Home News Tribune, All Area. And I'll look back into the first thing I said. All right? Sable football, 2010. NJSIAA, Central Jersey Group Four State Champions. Great job, guys.
Last thing we got, guys, we appreciate your time tonight, is a resolution from the Sable Board of Education. It says, whereas the Sable Board of Education encourages extracurricular activities for our students, and whereas it has come to this board's attention that the Sable War Memorial High School bomber football team has been named NJSIAA Central Jersey Group Four State Champions, and whereas this board is extremely proud of these students, athletes, and coaches for their dedication and perseverance to excel, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Borough of Sable, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey hereby commends and honors the Sable bomber football team for outstanding accomplishments during their season, and be it further resolved that this board encourages all student athletes at the Sable public schools to follow the example of these remarkable student athletes who strive to be the best that they can be, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution executed by the President and Business Administrator, Board Secretary on behalf of the Sable Board of Education be presented to the Sable War Memorial High School bomber football team at the regular meeting of the Board of Education this 21st day of December 2010. Coach?
Let's try to get it. Coach, she's getting her front. Congratulations.
You've got to get in place. You've got to slide, you've got to swish in a little bit.
All right. Coach, fantastic job.
Thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate your time. Thanks a lot. How you doing?
Hey, the boots, y'all. Another one.
Dr. Alphano, I'd like to just recognize one other group that doesn't get to compete and doesn't get to win awards, and that's the cheerleading squad. They're out at every football game, they're out there in the weather, they're out there doing it, and I just wanted to give them some public recognition. And I think my daughter had cheerleading for four years, and this is the best I've ever seen the cheerleading squad as far as their performance and the size of the squad. I just wanted to mention that. And the marching band that's always out there, too. And it's always great sitting next to those guys, too. It's a great opportunity, and that band is getting to be a pretty good size as well. So appreciate it. These are the good things that the board gets to do. Now, Dr. Alphano, I guess we press on with you gentlemen.
My technology to work. Put behind you.
Okay, everybody got the monthly technology and the monthly maintenance work order reports? Anybody have any questions, comments? If not?
Is it on the portal?
What's that?
Is that on the portal?
Well, we had it, yeah, it was posted last night. Who's on it?
Last night. It's only last meeting. It's only monthly.
Yeah, it's not on this one. No.
We approve of the last, we received the last.
And everybody got their minutes due last night, too, as well.
I make a motion that the minutes of the November 16th and December 7th meetings be approved.
I need a second. See the roll call vote.
Mr. Ballton.
Yes.
Mrs. Backer.
Uh, no, I have an issue with the...
The only issue that was discussed last night?
No, this is the...
All corrections that were sent were put in.
No, the, I had, we talked about the bus driver's salary, and that correction wasn't made.
I don't recall.
Did we discuss that last meeting?
Yeah.
I don't recall. I didn't, they were not bothering me.
No.
Could you restate the issue, because I don't recall it from our last meeting?
Sure you do, because you were even commenting on it. That was the one with the salaries. Hold on, I'll get it.
Refresh me, it's been a while.
I'll get it.
Is it the November 16th minutes?
December 7th.
No, no, it's November 16th. Sorry, that's why. November 16th. It was the closed session. The Board of Education discussed the need to increase the rate of pay for substitute bus drivers.
Oh, we noted that was moved to public. Was that the change?
Yes. It's still in here. It's the last page.
I'm trying to find it. There, let me.
You wanted to close together?
Yes. Just one add and move to public? Not a problem.
Any other questions, comments? I have a motion to file and accept, and I need a second.
Second.
It's already, Mr. McEnno.
Mr. Ballton. You're going to make the change.
No.
Still not? Both minutes?
No, just the 16th, November 16th.
The change has been made. Are you good with it?
You're going to vote on with the changes?
With the changes. We're going to make changes.
Yes, I made them.
Oh, we did that already?
Yes, I'm going to make them right now. Are you up?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Have we voting no on November 16th minutes because of the very simple fact that you as Board Secretary record and interpret the minutes and publish them? Board members do not add their comments to the minutes after the meeting, after the minutes have been recorded. I have an issue with that. I think it's illegal for a board member to add their comments to minutes that have been recorded, both visually and audible, in the auto, auto. Can't even say it. Now, you're talking about something different than the... I'm talking about board members adding comments to the minutes after we had received the minutes. It's Mr. DeAndrea's job as Board Secretary to interpret what is said and him to file those according to what he interpreted. Now, that was in November 16th. That's November 16th. Okay, he's voting on November 16th.
Mr. Hang on. I got an issue. If Mr. Bishada is alleging that we're doing something illegal, I think we are under obligation to table the minutes, find out whether or not the process that we used is accurate, and if it's not, have Mr. DeAndrea sit down with his transcription machine and type in the comments as they were said.
That was inappropriate.
But I don't think we can leave that accusation just hanging out there and have a majority of the board approve the minutes. I think we have to deal with what was said.
Well, again, I get back to what I said at the initial meeting. Wasn't the meeting recorded?
Yes.
Doesn't that serve as minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, not technically, that's the minutes. The minutes are what's written, correct? How long do we save those tapes? Isn't the minutes the official record of the minutes, the written?
Whatever the retention record requires.
Right. But the official minutes are what's on paper, correct?
Yeah.
That's considered the official, not the video. Correct? Is that correct?
The official minutes are those that we have in there. Whatever the record retention requires, if they're for infinity, they're for infinity. I don't recall.
Well, we already had a motion and a second, and we started a vote, a roll call vote, so we can't go ahead and put a table down on the votes.
We shouldn't be having comments during a roll call vote, but seeing as we're going in that direction, I'll be voting no on the November 16th minutes until we can get a clarification with regard to the process by which to derive it.
Mrs. Verno-Ricciulli, I'll get the inter second.
Yes.
Mr. Sayet, no on November 16th. 12:07?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
I'll have to say no on the 16th and yes on the 7th.
Mr. Limbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
No on this earlier meeting, that's the 16th, and yes on the 7th, for the same reasons that Mr. Sayet stated.
And Mr. McEnno.
Yes, we record the meetings for a reason.
And I hope the board understands my comment from the last meeting as to when the question was asked, why I didn't get involved, for this exact reason.
I recall.
Right.
Were the minutes approved?
Yes, the minutes were approved.
Would it be a conflict of interest then? I mean, if you feel uncomfortable with the minutes?
I have no, I have no problem with it. It's just I was asked after that reason why we were doing it and why I wasn't the one getting involved, because I've been in this experience where it's led to nothing but that.
But would I be uncomfortable with that? That's what I'm saying.
No, not at all.
Mrs. DeAndrea, I think after the minutes, that somebody, the board member can submit an addendum to it, and you could reflect as after the meeting, this...
And I don't, and I, that has happened to me before.
Okay.
Press on.
Well, I just need, I need to make one comment.
Sure.
If somebody had made an addendum to the minutes or amendments to the minutes, and Amideo wasn't comfortable with that, I'm sure he would say that. I'm sure that...
And I didn't say that.
Right.
All I'm just saying is, when people ask why I didn't reach out or why I wasn't putting
things specifically, it's for that reason.
Right.
The finger pointing then turns to, well, you didn't put what I said, you put what they said, and that's why I stayed out of it.
And I'm saying, are you all comfortable with that?
No, not at all.
Because then you're picking and choosing what you...
And I didn't pick and choose. The board read the minutes, if the board was comfortable, then I'm comfortable.
Do you think that the minutes reflect the meeting now?
Yes.
Yes.
And I, the outreach, I thought the minutes reflected the meeting the first time through, too. It's all into interpretation of the board as to how far you wish to expand upon your minutes or how much you don't want to include.
I mean, like, nothing that I said was minutes, like, as far as something that was controversial.
Right, and I understand that.
Let's make sure everyone understands that if a board member can make an amendment to a minute, and it bones on the bottom of everybody else, it becomes a matter of that board's record.
Right.
That meeting's record. And I always fall back on the fact that if there's anything in question, it's on video.
But they're saying that that could be deleted quicker than what's in writing.
Sure.
Right.
Would it be advisable that we get a clarification from one of our attorneys as to what the appropriate course of action?
I'll speak to them, but right now, the board has approved it.
That's fine, but just going forward, I'd like a clarification as to what the proper process is.
Certainly. On January 3rd, we'll get back.
That's fine.
Is this administrative issue done? Okay. We don't have a student council representative, we don't have a pick individual, we don't have an attorney report. Do we have any district highlights, Mr. Leno?
District highlights were the athletic honors that J.K. took to...
Very good. Dr. Alphano, your report, please.
Okay. Page three, Buildings and Grounds, there is no report. Finance, from numbers one to 12, are regular resolutions. Number 13 on page four is the Arts High School list of students that will be within that school. Number 14 is a, on page six, is a waiver between the SEA and the Board of Education. 15, I would like to revise number 15 to read. The Board of Education, sometimes the Board, is requested to terminate the services between the Board of Education and Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer, effective 12/31/10. The rest of the jargon will not be included.
Would it be advisable that we get a clarification from one of our attorneys as to what the appropriate course of action?
I'll speak to him, but right now, the board has approved it.
That's fine, but just going forward, I'd like a clarification as to what the proper process is.
Sure. On January third, we'll get back.
That's fine.
Is this administrative issue done? We don't have a student council representative, we don't have a pick individual, we don't have an attorney report. Do we have any district highlights, Mr. Lembah?
District highlights were the athletic honors and J.K.
Very good. Dr. Alfonso, your report, please.
Okay. Okay, page three, buildings and grounds, there is no report. Finance, from numbers one to twelve are regular resolutions. Number thirteen on page four is the Arts High School list of students that will be within that school. Number fourteen is a, on page six, is a waiver between the S.E.A. and the Board of Education. Fifteen, I would like to revise number fifteen to read. The Board of Education, sometimes the Board, is requested to terminate the services between the Board of Education and Walens Goldman and Spitzer effective twelve thirty-one ten. And the rest of the jargon will not be included. On number sixteen, portable bus lift for twenty-five thousand dollars. Seventeen and eighteen is a field drainage repair for six thousand dollars. And eighteen and nineteen, we're going to get involved with MSG Varsity Network, which is a really good channel, and we can see some of our high school sports on the channel and do a really good job. And that will be done through a grant.
I just want everyone to, it's not just sports. There are gonna be other activities also, and it's just not our sports program that will appear on that. And it'll appear on different mediums, there's a web-based, a web-based site that you'll have, there will be TV programming on. And you will have, at another point in time, someone appointed to run the program for a certain style once the job description and everything is established.
Page seven, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three are denials of four grievances. Any questions with section D?
Dr. Alfonso, I have some questions on the bill list.
Sure.
Mr. DeAndrea, on the bill list, there's an EZ Pass for two hundred dollars. What employees are of, or have them?
Not having the actual vouchers here with me. I'm gonna assume that they are for the bus drivers. Were they charged to an account, eleven triple zero two seventy-six hundred? Because those are the only individuals that we purchase the EZ Pass for, is for our bus drivers so they can get around the state.
All right, just the bus drivers, okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions here also about our phone services here. We have Verizon as our local telephone. The bill is fifteen thousand, two seventy-four eighty-one. The internet charge was twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and ten cents. And the monthly access fee was eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and three cents. Are we going to, I have brought this up before about the triple play with Cablevision, because we have a bill here from Cablevision also for three hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy cents for December and November. I think it would be advisable, I know we have a contract, if I'm correct, that's going to expire soon. Have we gotten quotes from Cablevision or another phone provider?
At this point in time, I'm not aware of anyone else that's providing that type of service to the area, but I can speak with Mrs. Paul and look into that.
Actually, I can. The technology committee had reviewed that at its last meeting. We are planning a transition this summer to go to Optimum Light Path, which is the same organization that gave Arlett School the grant that we saw last month, which will cover our phone and our internet, and execute that transition and save us a whole bunch of money.
As I continue with this, AT&T, we have a charge of four hundred and three dollars for long-distance service. I know on my local phone, which is Verizon, the long-distance charges are covered through local phone. I don't understand why we have a separate account with AT&T for long-distance service.
Again, Mr. Bishada, you hit me this evening with it.
No, I'm sorry, I just had a chance to go through the portal today.
I don't have an answer. I would have to, again, sit and look at the bills and see why we're using AT&T. And my assumption is their rates at this point in time, since we do use a consortium to do everything, with their rates, we're much cheaper than anybody else that we have.
That was my question. Are all those services on the consortium?
Yes, and we're trying to, we're also trying to bring in an outside professional firm to do auditing of our telephone bills. We're working with Mrs. Paul on that.
A limited, three last questions, very simple ones. Course reimbursement that we pay for teachers to upgrade their education level. Is that included in a end-of-year tax account for them? Is it included in their income tax as an extra income?
No, never before, no.
Okay. How about professional days? Are they taxable or not taxable?
No, not taxable.
Okay. Last question goes to energy costs. Are we saving that much? Our Jersey Central bill for October was about fifty-four thousand, eight hundred, and November's bill is about fifty-five thousand, even, somewhere in that range. I'm not gonna get, are we saving that much money through the program that we had initiated?
We're down twelve percent year-to-date in utilities, and I've got the PowerPoint slide that we're going to the board tomorrow. I just need a clarification from Mr. DeAndrea when I, we're down twelve.
There are many other factors. Degree weather days from one year to another. I can't tell you directly, is it based upon what we're actually doing? I'm gonna say part of it, yes. But there's more to it than just saying fifty-four thousand versus fifty-five, we've done better. There's a whole bunch of other things that you have to factor in.
Okay, this is under energy also. What is Woodruff Energy Incorporated? Is that an oil supply company?
They're the transporter of the gas. One provides, one transports.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mrs. Backer?
The bus lift, you said there were two quotes, is this the lower quote?
Yes, absolutely.
Do you know what the other quote was, by your hands? Was this something we budgeted for?
No, it was not. It was not something budgeted, because our numbers came in so well from our transportation routes. This is something they've been looking for for several years, and just an opportunity, the opportunity in time to do it.
So the money's being taken from savings in the rounds?
Yes, twenty-six, nine was the next one, and great manufacturing company did not provide it well.
I have a question.
Mrs. Bruno, please.
On number thirteen, the students that are going to the Middlesex County Arts High School program, do they just, do they go there on their own and take a course? What, how does that program work?
They have, first of all, they have to audition in order to qualify. Once they're selected as finalists, they attend classes once a week for a period, I think it is twelve weeks. It's not a whole semester. Buses from Arts High School come and pick them up at our school and drop them back at our school.
During the school day, or...?
Yes, it's half-day.
Thank you.
You are.
The board, that's funded tuition.
Yes.
And the tuition includes the transportation.
Right.
It's a good program.
It's a great program.
It's excellent.
Also, under finance, Mr. DeAndrea, I need to abstain on a check for Premier Printing Solutions. And I also need to abstain on the Middlesex County Arts High School. And Mrs. Bruno Rucuya, on April fifteenth of this year, General Electric has partnered with the Middlesex County Arts High School. We're doing a presentation, we've done it now for the past two years. If you're interested, it's twenty-five dollars a ticket. You'll be able to come and actually see the students perform, and all the proceeds go directly to Middlesex County Arts High School.
Remind me of that.
Yes, Mr. Lembah and I went last year, and it was great. I would highly recommend for twenty-five dollars, it's great entertainment, great food. And a lot of our students do very well.
Kevin, what was the second check, please?
No, one check, Premier Printing Solutions. Middlesex County Arts High School, the approval on the item. And I'll be voting no on the attorney resolution.
One second.
That's number fifteen.
I would also like to make a suggestion with regard to that, and it doesn't need to be a formal motion unless the board doesn't agree. With regard to the attorney transition, we're going to incur some startup cost as a result of transitioning over to a new attorney, having them read the files and get up to speed. I would like to minimize the amount of startup cost that we pay. Can we have Schwartz, Simon, Edelstein, Selsa, and Kessler disaggregate the transition costs in the billing so that we know exactly what they're charging us to get up to speed? I think it might help minimize that number of bingo that we're tracking it. Does anyone on the board object to doing that?
I think it's a good idea. Any other questions with section D? With none, moving to C, no report. D, personnel certified, two unpaid medical leaves, and an approval of a unpaid coaching aid on page eight. Number four are professional days for our professional staff. Number five are the tutorial teachers for the HESPA. Number six are employment approvals. Page ten is a, one person on a substitute list. Any questions with section D? With none, moving to E, policy, no report, page ten. F is curriculum, once again, special services and placements, which are listed on pages ten and eleven. If you move to page twelve, under curriculum, number two, the Board of Education is going to approve the curriculum for the following four courses, and a new course is going to be created called Life Skills, which is part of the special education I.D.P. process. Any questions with section E? Actually, F. Moving to G, co-curriculum, a pen pal day program at Truman, PTO, tricky trick. Any questions with G? None. Moving to H, sports services. Transportation waiver is the first retroactive trip on page thirteen, and six trip approvals on pages thirteen and fourteen, and the academic competitions, which ends my report on fourteen. I would like to say and wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and a very healthy Happy New Year. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Any board discussion, agenda rise, or open up for the public? Hearing none at this time, like, open up for the public?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mackinon? We do have...
You have an agenda.
Just very quickly, it's, I'm sorry. D, the first one, fifteen, is withdrawn because we had it in the body, so that one's withdrawn. D is a substitute, couple additions. And H is on section D is my conference for technology, which is, I believe, the twenty-seventh and twentieth of January. I'm sorry about that. That concludes our tour.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open up for the public for any comments or questions about the agenda. The agenda might be only still coming, please come up to page eight and address with a record. And she does not want to be video dated.
Barbara Kilcunnings, twenty-two Schmin Street.
Can you just speak into the microphone, there's a sound that's still picked up. Thank you.
Barbara Kilcunnings, twenty-two Schmin Street. My question, well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the Sereb High School football team, because it really thrills me to get positive news for Sereb. And it puts Sereb on the map, and it makes the whole community proud. And a great job done by the coaches also. Can I speak about the minutes too, which is part of it before?
Part of the agenda, sure, yes.
And I think you should know this, Mr. Mackinon, with, minutes are very important. And I believe what Mrs. Batko said, and or Mr. Bishada, I forget which one said it, about legal ramifications. And I think you saw that with the planning board.
Very personally, yes.
And you're referring to all the tapes, and, but many times, minutes are, like, someone said, a synopsis of what transpired at a meeting. And I think you just can't, all right, if you want to add statements, but how could you add comments if it wasn't said at the meeting? So this is the formal meeting, and it should be the minutes that were at the meeting, not asking for...
But I think the board member comments were clarifications on what they said that they felt was not captured. And I think you can do that as long as you submit it and say, I want to add this as an amendment to the agenda, and the rest of the board approves that, and it becomes an official matter of record. My, what I like about the...
But, excuse me, if the board approves, if you add, if some member adds minutes to Mr. DeAndrea, how does the rest of the board know what they said, and do they approve it?
Well, you would have to be at the next meeting saying, I want to add this as an addendum to the meeting minutes. It doesn't become an official record if you just hand it and submit it. No, I agree with you. It has to be approved by the board.
I think you have to be extremely careful, because like you saw with the planning board, there are legal ramifications, and it could be, I mean, a lot of money gets transferred here. There's a lot of things that happen, and a lot of litigation. And I think minutes should be accurate, and they should be there. And if it's transcribed or by tapes, or there should be a library, and it's for the tapes to be kept, so.
I agree. No, I'm with you on the minutes. The reason I like the tape was if I wanted to go back a month and say, I want to recreate what happened, the conversation on November sixteenth, I could read the minutes, or I would pull a videotaper, watch the videotape. I think that gives you a better representation of who said what. And you can also see the context in which it was said, is what you cannot read from a piece of paper. So I agree, the minutes have to be a matter of record, and you can archive those a lot longer. They don't decay like a videotape might. And now, in the age of digitizing things, we can keep it forever, just like a piece of paper.
Well, that's good.
And I'm a, I love, you know, and I shy away from tapes because I was in the planning board, I understand the legal ramifications.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
But I like the tape because you can read it, and if you ever watch these on the cable network, you can hear them, they're very good, the video's very good, and the sound's very good. I think that's a better recreation of the meeting than what's on a piece of paper. But I'm not minimizing the fact that the paper needs to be just as accurate.
Okay. The other item was number fifteen, and I didn't quite follow it or understand. It seems like now we're retaining two attorneys.
No, we had changed that, we had talked about that. And what the board voted was what Dr. Alfonso made me change to it, is that the board is terminating the contract with the former attorney effective thirty-one December. What verbiage you have in your, it's not the verbiage we... Dr. Alfonso, can you read what you said before?
My only comment is, I mean, going to all the girl council meetings, and I've seen a lot of attorneys get transferred, just like you do probably with the planning board, and the new attorney just picks up. There's no carryovers from attorneys that this costs the community that will be turning around and paying two attorneys.
No, the board was concerned about that, and that was our discussion prior. And the new thing that we just voted on, or will vote on, Dr. Alfonso, stated as...
I mean, I don't care who you keep, if you keep, well, if you keep somebody else, but it's not fair to taxpayers.
Can you just read it directly, Dr. Alfonso, what we voted on, or want to vote on?
The Board of Education is requesting to terminate the services between the Board and Walens Goldman Spitzer effective December thirty-first, two thousand and ten.
That should be reflected in this.
That was number fifteen.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? Can I respond?
Sure.
We are all in agreement, I believe, that we only want to pay one attorney for a certain item. So regardless of which one we're paying, as long as we only pay one, that's, that was all agreed upon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alfonso. Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Send to you, to the board, the administration.
Very festive celebration.
I know this is part of the minutes, but I don't want to come back here again, so could I just comment about one thing?
Are you asking for special dispensation?
Yes.
Since you are regular at meetings...
Is it a holiday?
Yes.
Probably, I think there's only maybe one other taxpayer other than an employee here. I watched the meetings, you know, that has happened over the past years and several times, and I look at the minutes. We just lost two employees in this school system. Mr. Hudek and Nancy Kukowski, who has served so long. There wasn't one statement, no moment of silence. I have never seen a board for the past couple of years not acknowledge employees and long-term employees that have passed on. Not a moment of silence, not mentioning, and I just think it's extremely disrespectful to the employees that you have had here that were excellent employees, and no mention of it. And I think there should be a moment of silence, or just to acknowledge that they passed on. I mean, Mr. Hudek and Nancy were excellent teachers and highly respected. And I've seen this for the past few years, and I think it's very, very important to acknowledge them, a moment of silence or something.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. An oversight on my part. Thank you, Matt. Anyone else, any comments on the agenda before I close the public course on the agenda? At this time, I'd like to get a roll call vote to power and accept the superintendent's report. After I get a motion.
I'll make it.
Mr. Lembah makes a motion to accept the policy. I need a second. Second. I have a second, need a roll call vote.
Mr. Balca?
I'm going to abstain on item number eight in section D, Treasury Report. Yes, how a lot of items apply.
He's abstaining on Treasury Report, he has to.
Mrs. Backer?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes, there's so noted to the minutes, saying no.
Mrs. Bruno Rucuya?
Yes, on everything except for item B, number fifteen. I'm voting no on that, terminating the attorney's contract.
Mr. Syak?
Yes, with the two abstentions noted, as well as no on B fifteen.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes, with no on B fifteen.
Mr. Lembah?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes, but no on fifteen.
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes, with no exceptions.
Mr. Mackinon, can I make a comment, please?
Absolutely.
On what Mrs. Kilcunnings said, she's absolutely right. It's my fault, I completely forgot. Mr. Hudek was a longtime friend, and for whatever reason, Ms. Sutherland and I, and Ms. Kukowski, they were forty-year employees of the district. It's not the board's fault, that's my fault. I didn't pick it up. I...
And we had done that in the past for...
And it certainly is something that, in January, I think that we, you know, I'll leave it to myself to make sure. I was very close friends with Mr. Hudek, so it was never intended to be a slight or something that, you know, we didn't respect their years of service, even Ms. Kukowski. And I know Ms. Sutherland was very close to Ms. Kukowski, and tried to really work it out, and tried to help her at the end. We pray to God that they're in a better place, and I'm sure they are. And I apologize.
Just have a mechanism in place for somebody maybe in your office.
Right. It's...
Add that to the...
It is absolutely, she's absolutely correct, and I apologize, that's my fault.
Thank you, Dr. Alfonso. Background information and discussion. I sent an email to the board. I think we all, who live in town, the region suburban, and there was an article, a lengthy article, about the Sable Economic Redevelopment Association approving the plan for national ed. And I've been involved and familiar with this project since its inception, since I've been on the planning board longer than I've been on the Board of Education. And there's a few things that we as a board need to start taking a look at, because this project is, it's four hundred and eleven acres being developed. And a part of that development is two thousand townhomes, with a significant number of three-bedroom homes. And I've sat through many briefings. It has not come to the planning board yet. Sarah had just recently approved it. Three-bedroom condominiums, people that buy those things, I'm thinking, have children, and that's going to be an impact on the school district. Part of the national ed project is, if you know anything about impact fees in the state of New Jersey, we cannot force contractors to provide those. However, developer O'Neill Properties has designated nineteen million dollars to build to the school board. I don't see any impact. There's a lot of decisions that we're going to have to make in the very near future as far as, you know, what do we do with that nineteen million dollars? How is it best utilized? What number of children, what ages, what schools will be impacted, and on and on and on. And I think the earlier we start talking about and getting a lot of it, the better off we are going to be to make a more informed decision. I'll tell you right now, from my perspective on the planning board, I have an issue with two thousand townhomes and a majority of three-bedrooms. two thousand townhomes and majority three-bedrooms. I mean, I just have to, you know, and from the public out there, if you ever want to know what makes a school board member want to pull their hair out, it's things like this, where your budget keeps getting cut from the council, then you find, oh, by the way, we're going to build additional two thousand residential units in town, and we're supposed to sit there and, you know, and just say, okay. So what I want to do, and I want the board's okay to do that, is what I like to do so that we're educated about what's going on, is have me send a letter to the executive director of Searle and invite him to come to a school board meeting to brief us on this project as far as the component that's going to affect schools. I think if you get the information firsthand, and any questions, and any impact, because I am more familiar about the project because I've seen the plans and then there's several revisions, and all I can tell you is that what we were basically told five years ago is not what we're going to wind up, okay? And that's, that's a problem, because this is the biggest development that this town probably ever has or ever will experience, so we need to, you know, I think need to jump on board this, this train and to take a step out and take a look at the impact that's going to be on the school district, because I think we're only going to get one shot at doing this right. So it's okay with the board, what I want to do is invite the executive director of Searle, maybe Mr. Perdizanov wants to come to brief us on this project so we're educated about it, and they're also willing to make some kind of agreement where if the number of students reaches a certain point, that they would pay a million-dollar fine a year to the school district. So we have to determine what is that number going to be, you know? But then I ask them, then why, you know, if that's the case, why are you building three-bedrooms? You know, there's a lot of questions we need to ask. So the first step is...
Are they projecting, are they projecting a number of schoolchildren?
No, they have not given us a number yet, and that's one of the questions that we need to ask, and they're not going to commit to a number, I just tell you right now, my experience. So it's okay with the board that, Dr. Afano, too, your input that sometime maybe in February meeting, the second meeting maybe in February, we can have the individual that's involved with this project come and brief the board on the impact, I think that's prudent that we take a look at. And anybody... Mr. Mackinon?
I've attended some of these Searle meetings, and I'll be very honest with you, a lot of things, if you'll read the paper on the Searle meeting, a decision was made after three and a half hours in closed session of eliminating a hundred homes. I would recommend for the public to become more involved with this, and if there is an objection to three hundred and ninety-four three-bedroom homes, I believe it's five hundred or almost six hundred two-bedroom homes, to get involved. Go to these Searle meetings because it's going to impact every one of us. It's going to impact the quality of life in this town, the education of our students in this school district, and the, believe me, when they talk taxes, do you realize when you have a greater demand for services in this town, I personally do not believe there's going to be tax relief generated from this project? And that's why I'm asking the public to please get involved. Attend these meetings, make your feelings felt, if you feel for it, that's fine, if you feel against it, that's fine also, but get involved. Don't sit on your backside, and when it comes down, complain. I'd use stronger terms than I normally would use, but don't complain. Get involved now and let people know what your feelings are.
Well, you appreciate your restraint, Mr. Bishat. You're absolutely right, they're talking about a pilot program, payment of lieu taxes right up the bat, so there's a sign in there already that something's, something's happening. So the bottom line is, so that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to invite the executive director to come brief us, we hear right from what's his mouth, on any questions that we can ask. That's the only thing I had. Anybody have anything else, your background discussion? Were we going to talk, you had the budget, you had the delegate? Oh, okay. Mr. Syak, how could I forget?
The only real big news is the appointment of a new education commissioner, Christopher Cerf. New Jersey School Boards really doesn't know a lot about him, other than, you know, they've heard the name and they know that he was a former deputy chancellor of New York City Public Schools. Governor Christie has appointed someone who is a big charter school advocate, a lot of experience with charter schools, he was involved with the Edison Schools project a while back, so it should be interesting, waiting to see exactly where he's going to go from there. But I think we all have an idea of where he stands and what he's going to be looking at.
Are you betting on how long he's going to last in that position?
It's a tough job, I think, working for this governor. Although if he's, instinct was more than the old commissioner was, he may actually last and work out. The other item is that the president of New Jersey School Boards, Ray Wiss, did testify before the Senate Education Committee with regard to supporting tenure reform, and he indicated that NJSBA has had policy on the books and been in favor of tenure reform since the Ford administration. So it's been quite some time.
Thank you, sir. Discussion on the tentative two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget, Mr. Portse.
This evening, you have received a packet. In the packet, you'll have four sets of documents. The lead one is the calculation of taxes. The second group of paperwork is a summary of the proposed budget. The third section that is stapled is a detail of all the line items and how the numbers became to be, and the last packet is the detailed listing of all the employees in the district who are full-time salaried individuals. What we've done for this evening is you are receiving a packet of information that meets the new mandate of only a two percent tax increase. You know, working with the administration, Dr. Afano, Ms. Sullivan, what you have before you is a budget after two percent tax increase. Other than that, the only discussion really to transpire is what method do you wish to use moving forward? And I just want to add some quick caveats as to how we got to where we are so that in the future, we're not sitting here saying we did not know that. Number one, first assumption made, flat state funding, and when I say stat, flat state funding, I'm assuming the seven hundred thousand dollars for Ed Jobs Fund is somehow incorporated into that flat state aid number. So the eighteen million already encompasses seven hundred thousand dollars in Ed funds when I say flat state funding. We will generate another two point eight million dollars for some fund balance. When you review your audit, you'll see we have some excess money there that was due to some general entries that the auditors haven't made for the school development authority money that we have yet to receive, but we have applied for. There's a slight decrease in revenue because interest income is no longer meeting the hundred thousand dollars, so I decreased that by fifty. There is no money at this point in time for any capital projects. The Buildings and Grounds Committee agreed to having Mr. Patruliano and I look forward and get some numbers together on certain projects, and the goal will be at that point to take the money out of capital reserve to fund those projects, so there is no impact on that.
What do we have in capital reserve as we speak?
One point two million, one point two five, to be exact. So those are some of the things that were built into this. So any, if anything drastically changes, specifically the unknown of state aid, that will adjust this budget one way or another. We have to monitor and see where we are, but we have everything, and I guess the goal is what method do we want to use this year as preparing the board?
Well, this board, I think, has experimented with the finance committee concept and has ruled that out, so what I like to do is move forward unless anybody has an issue with, as the committee of the whole board. Anytime we do budget discussions, we do it, the whole board here, everybody's understanding, getting the same information at the same time. I think that kind of worked out well last year, how we had the separate colored pages and everybody was able to follow, I thought that was very good on your part, the team would do that. So I like to, you know, at every meeting at least talk budgeting, and hopefully, for the first time since I can recall, that we might be able to get state numbers before we actually adopt a budget, if that's possible. Maybe the new education commissioner will make that as a recommendation. The other issues that I have, is this year, Mr. Syak, are we assuming that April's going to be the budget in that thing, are we going to move until November, or how they, what are they going to do? Is there any talk about that?
The last I had heard is that if they are going to move it, it's something that's going to happen in the lame duck, which expires in the beginning of January, so my guess is the timeframe is running very short, I don't expect it to move.
And I can tell you, Mr. Mackinon, at my accounting meeting, we basically received the same direction. Right now, be prepared that your timelines are all going to be the same, that you'll probably adopt a tentative budget early March, final budget late March with the budget, election vote at late April, the April twenty-seventh.
And then April, get the state money.
We're probably assuming the week before you adopt your tentative, you'll probably get your state aid, if you're lucky, late February.
That is our base. Okay, so guys, you have your homework here, perhaps over the, over the break, holiday break, you can get smart on this, and I would encourage you to, if you have any questions, if you're not familiar with the budget, ask those questions now so that when we go to meetings, we can talk and move on. So if you have any questions, fire off an email to Mr. DeAndrea to get those things answered so that we can have more productive meetings where we can actually be moving forward with the budget.
And if I could, one other thing while you're looking through it. The biggest thing that we dealt with was technology for the future, and what we do not have at this point in time, we're going to work with the administration, the technology department. We put in here two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to lease purchase technology for the next three years or possibly four. So at some point in time, we will come back with a technology plan that includes spending either seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year or a million dollars, depending on what the administration feels are the priorities. And the reason we're looking at it in that approach is that there are so many different groups that want certain types of technology incorporated, and we have to address our backbone as the first priority. As Mr. Syak alluded, this light path, that alone is close to a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar investment. So if we bought just that, we would do no other technology, because we're at the third, this concludes the third year of what we did three years ago when we purchased a thousand computers. So we're back to that cycle, but we are looking at a different method of net, netbooks, of things that people want, and various other things, smartphones and things of that nature. So you will get a full technology plan, either seven hundred and fifty thousand or million dollar investment for next year, but we've only budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand to do the lease purchase. So when you go through, all technology's taken out, but we will come back to with that.
I have one question. I know last year when we did the final cuts of the budget, we cut some from the supply account, and I know some board members had some concern with that. Do you know what, Pan, currently right now, as we're halfway through the school year, what we have in our supply count?
I was working with it with supplies and textbooks, over two hundred thousand dollars, and I ca...